What is going on YouTube? It is Millbro back with another episode of New Era, Episode 26. Just got done doing some... I just put some stuff in on the overnight and actually modified the garage. Don't mind me running so quick cuz I have... I have a, uh, set of... What do you call it? It's, uh... No, I got Mega Crush. That's why I'm running so quickly. I managed to clear out the garage overnight for... So now I've got it basically cleaned up for... And, uh... The motorcycle actually has plenty to stay. Running a little low on gas. We had to clear out the church in a little bit. Don't remember if I said it or did or not in this episode or if it was an overnight thing, but... See you later zombie. I set up a... I set up my dew collector. So now I'm making pure... Now I'm making pure water. Which is excellent news. And... Yeah, bought some Mega Crushes just for the hydration like yo. Man, this sort of stuff is just crazy for the movement speed. I believe it's 50% movement speed boost? Yes, it is. Oh, so a little hyper when my character is at the moment. Uh, before I forget anything... Actually grab that and... Wouldn't you know it, got even more grilled meat hanging out. I'll just slap that all in. I actually threw my cigar in my... In my enforcer sunglasses, so now... I have plus 10% bartering and also a point in strength if I feel the need to do so. And might do a little selling trip. I don't think I'll use those sugar buds, but... Cuz I don't think that's a big enough cause to sell. And... How much is this gonna take for me to... To make into water? There's no real point in having murky water anymore. Don't use it to make any... I don't use it to make any glue. It's like the Etap Purified Water for that. And... That should be good. And just gotta throw you all in. Perfect. One thing I should actually look into... Quick is the... Is the chemistry station. Not the cement mixer, that's what I was trying to say. Need 25 fortune iron for that and... Need some springs, mechanical parts, I believe. We got plenty of that stuff. And... Actually need an engine for that. I always forget about my... My generator bunk. My generator bank with all that. And... Look at DeSohn Legendary Parts. There we go. I believe, yep, we have... We have a cement mixer on the way, so that's excellent stuff. Kinda starting to shape up a little bit. So yeah, I'm going to... I'm gonna... I think I'm gonna try and... I wanna hold off on scavenging as much gas as possible. Cuz I would like to go into salvage operations sometime. I could probably optimize some points out of... Yeah, optimize some points. Yeah, shift some over to that. Yeah, give me one second and I will actually... Give me a second and I'll actually head over to the church job just over there. It's not too far. Alrighty, we are pulling up to the church. It's really just a short drive. I had to do just a couple... I just wanted to swap out some gear real quick. I have the, uh... Tier 4 sawed-off I found. Because I figured like, the pipe rifle is just really not good. It's like with its single-shot capability. And also use a 762. It's not that big of a deal cuz like I don't... I tried not to use the AK too much, but it's just one of those deals of like, I'd rather not have the... Yo, just, I'd rather have another ammo type that'll be used. You know what? Let's test it out on you. Gotta be careful the shots though. There we go. Hey, didn't need that arm anyways. We'll search the cars out front though really quick. See what we got. Some extra gas and a tech planet. 62, I have 100 there and... You never will... You never know what we'll find out here. Little bit of glue and duct tape, always welcome around here. Hmm... And a tier 4 sledgehammer. Those are fun, but I really don't need that. I was gonna take out the lumberjack, but eh, don't even worry about him. Saint Mo's Cathedral. Hmm... Okay, we'll check out front again. More cars in the lot. More cars in the lot. And... Really, none of these reset. Nope, here comes the... Here comes the lumberjack. Come here, big guy. There you go. And, okay. Good to know cars don't reset up front of this POI. Good and... Good to know. We'll check... Let me actually check around front here really quick, a little back. Check for a zombie. There we go, and... One more to be absolutely certain. Hello? Oop! Already strung out, are not strong with a rad. Take care of you. I forgot the water. I'll drink it. Get some drinks. Come on. There we go. Take care of you and... Mikey, what are you doing in there? There. That should be the, uh... Should be the outside taken care of. Don't wanna have zombies, uh... Don't wanna have zombies be... With me wondering where zombies are at. Make sure that's nothing in it. Make sure I grab all this because that's... That's just free stone for the taking right there. Alright... Even more stone. Oh! I believe this is a collapsed bit. Yep! I remember seeing this POI, so... Oh, that's a feral biker. Try and reload a bit. And... Give him a pop on the old shotgun. Come here. There we go. Take care of him. Oh, good to use something other than this AK. There we go. That's if the shot hit. Come here, big boy. I think I'll just aim for center mass mostly. Come here. There we go. And... Actually, um... There's... This is good for books, but I think there might be something... Up in the... Up in one of these attics here quick... That might have something handy for me. I think it's in that window there. How silly me with the spring leg. I'll get it taken care of in just a second, but I believe there's hidden stash. Let me check really quick. I'm sure I'll find more wood, but... And... I don't recommend jumping with spring leg usually because that can hurt you. But... Yep, that looks like a hidden stash to me. Oh boy, this is gonna be a 5,000 hit point block. Let me... No wait, can I actually hit through this? Uh, let my stamina regen. I forgot. I'm so used to having blocks be, uh... Not being able to hit through blocks. Another bit of armored up and we'll actually scrap you. And... We're actually 10 books away and 5 books away from each of those series. Give me one second and I'll show you what other books we got out of this. Adventures. And... Anything there? No. Decent stuff and... Look like a nightstalker book. More vehicles. More vehicles, um... Just one more there. More armored up. Okay, I made... I believe the main library here like it was just a quick, but I didn't want to bore you guys with it. So we got two electrical traps, two... We need seven more for that series. And we're 33 off of making a gyrocopter. We should be coming up on a 4x4 soon. Chalk on Weekly, we got Duplico Nightstalker, Volume 5, which is Boz doing 10% more damage at night. We got Volume 6, gain 5% more XP from taking out zombies at night, which is actually great for a horde knight. 10% more damage to safes and... Two armored ups, so we're 7 away from that. And one more explosive book. Wonderful. Um... I believe... Just check this really quick. Just... Oh yeah, this is staircase. Let's just keep moving. I'm not even worried about the... Not even worried about my stamina. I have all my spring leg, that's what I was trying to say. Take care of you and... Take care of you. Did that actually take you down? I think it did. Oop, there's... There you are. Level up and we're here now level 41. One skill point to spend. Ah, well, I'll worry about that in a second. And... Actually had to hit that with a pickaxe. I was hoping maybe for some cloth out of it, but no joy. I think I need a little bit more wood as well, but... I believe... I think maybe I can harvest this out. Like supposedly like I could get like gems if I have the right book. Believe it's Wasteland Treasures, I believe? No, I don't have the book. I'm not even gonna bother. But it does add a small chance to it, the loot pool. And... Well, there's the wood salt. And what do you got in here? Sewing kit basically. Try to find the way through here. Um... Where is it? Where do I go? I think I have to go through here. I could be mistaken cuz this might not be the way. I hope it's the way. Think it is. Then again, this could be just collapsed. No, wait. Yeah, this is my first time going through this. Hmm... Anybody around? Nope. Got a little hallway. Stunbaton, help me. Take care of you really quick. Feral biker proven to be a tough hit. There we go. Nothing out of you really, so... Ah, yes. Coming through. Take care of you. And... Take care of you. Hey, big mama. And... Believe we go downstairs, so... Hey, nurse. Oh, hi Mikey. I should've probably expected zombies. Take care of you and... And... Come on. There you go. Now let me have my free cobblestone. Thank you for my free stone. And... I believe... Yep, we go up through here. I'm like, you've been through here. Ah, I believe... Can I actually make a splint at the moment? Hmm... No, I can't. I need... I still need that stinking cloth. See if there's any of this. No. I probably should just have a bunch of cloth on hand. Give me that. I'll actually grab that for the loot and... There you go. Perfect. Have my leg cured up. Voila! Ow, I swear if I broke my leg again, I would probably... Then again, I haven't even earned a trophy for breaking my leg. Like I've been in my creative world, like my world is creative enabled, but doesn't count as disabled trophies. There you go. Construction worker. Be mindful of the stairs. Believe... There. Ah! And we are up in the main area. Look at all these zombies. Lots of them. Looks like the old choir. Let's go down and say hello. Hello, I'm... I'd like to speak to whoever's in charge of this establishment. Mikey. Mikey, are you in charge? Hmm? Wouldn't be surprised if he does. There you go. Big boys down. There you go. Come here. See you later. They really go launching off the stairs, especially the lightweights. Smack you up. Nope, no problem. Take care of you. Smack you up a little bit and... Hey, a little bit of loot. What you know? Put some shotgun magazines. I'll gladly take them. Okay, I believe if I remember correctly, there's some extra books in the office. Art of Mining. This is the Confessional. Take these with for cloth. And what you got in the purse? Nine hole dukes. Okay, and nothing in you. And... Just some extra stone and cobblestone. There's schematic I've read. Make sure that goes to the staircase. Please tell me I have... There's at least some books in here. I'd love to know. And... Wait for my... At least one bookshelf with a scope schematic. And a wall safe. Give me a second while I try to pick it to the safe. Hmm... Alright, safe opened. What do we got? Our tech planet book. Nice. I think maybe we're supposed to come in through here or... Oh, we were supposed... I was supposed to come through this door. Oop! Dodge and weave, dodge and weave. We got the police officer. And... Come here. You know what? You get AK. Not gonna wait for you to... Not gonna wait for you just to... Be running about all day. Might be some birds over here. Um... Birds? Ah, yes, there's one right there. Kinda blends in with the structure. And... There we go, quest cleared, but we got... There is loot up top. The main loot is up top and gotta worry about the parkour. So... What... Where is it at? It's in... Yeah, it's up top here. In the ladder, in the bell tower. And AK's loaded. Let me break into the loot and I'll show it to you. Dang it. Darn it. And... That's broken. Alright, let's check out the loot. More armored up, okay. Check out the medical supplies, more medical journal. There is rat remover, which I'll gladly take. And more armored up and a... And a ale cream and we'll look at this. Oh, we also got an iron spear. Let me actually start reading some of these books quick. Shotguns. Delveral quality 2. Robacter quality 4, okay. Kind of basic resources like ore, stone and wood, okay. That's my Volume 5. Medical journal, which we need two more books. Five more books for the other series and... Nope, I keep forgetting. There we go. That and... One more armored up and another scraping for fun. Wrench quality 5. Might upgrade to that. Uh, and some silver nugs and all that to help out. So that's... Not bad loot, especially considering we're in the winter biome. Let's run down to the motorcycle. Shouldn't be that bad. Oh, this might be a really bad thing. Um... You know what? Let's go for a trophy. There we go, evil can evil. Not the smartest decision by any means to add to me, but... I got Maxol physician and if he has a cast through me, I should be able to heal that basically instantly. I'm like, uh... What do I wanna do? All for the sake of earning me a dumb trophy. Worth it. Now I don't ever have to break my leg again if I could help it. Oh boy, I gotta break out of this church and... Come on, warmer swing. Alright, go. Man, we are so slow from this. Just get me to the motorcycle and... Get me to the motorcycle and we'll move. Take care of you though. And... Just throw it all in, I don't care. Alright. One sec, I'll be over to enter use. You, I'm back with your job. Please help me out with a decent reward. Get away from me, little jerk. Gotta ride the motorcycle and just to help, uh... Help out with trying to get there a little bit quicker. There. Alright. You, do you have anything good for me at least, please?
You again. Huh, you did some good work.
Tech planet. I'll actually take your... Take your cement, that's pretty valuable stuff. And I'll take the exploding arrows. Tech planet I can find more of. We can do a...
I've got some work if you need the dukes. This generation has not...
I'll do the fetching clear to the west actually. It's at town hall. And... What do you have for medical, Hugh? I mean... Does this actually work? Okay. Oh! I did not know that. I did not know you could just use a splint and that instantly heals it. Hold on. I could buy this tier 5 robotic turret from him, but well, I'm not even gonna worry about that. And you have... You have more junk like that and actually I wanna look for... Tools or... Tier 1 sealax. Oh, happy days. We... I was... I thought it would only be a... Only a plaster cast would work for that folks. I didn't... I did not realize that that would just instantly do it. Well, that problem solved. I'm gonna drop my loot off and I'll meet you guys at the town hall. Alrighty, everybody. As you can see, I'm back in like kinda my little hometown now. Here for the town hall. You know, I figured to like take it cuz like it's on the way back, basically back home and it's like... Figured it wouldn't be a bad spot and did wanna say that I have invested into level 1 of salvage operations. It's really for the sake of gasoline. It's... Like yo, just keeping the motorcycle fueled up. I believe, um, before I was... Before I... I also took another... Mega crush just so I can actually, uh... Not strictly for movement speed, but, um... Just so I can actually move around and, uh, well, not worry about... Um, stamina and my water whining at me constantly. Let's just see how much it just does. Like also doing a little bit more damage. It's, uh, I think about 55 damage. But like I should probably get about 150 gas as to compared to before I was actually grabbing... Like I was gathering about like 120 gasoline per car. So it's like overall just a good bonus. I mean, it's really... I'm really not even mad about going into it because it's like... It's just good for extra gasoline. Like we'll see what... Like how much gas we wind up out of these two cars like... I think I wound up like with 200 gas just from... Salvaging a couple of these cars. But like... This will kinda really come into play more like, uh, once I get really crazy. 315 gas, that's not bad. And throw that in. We're back to 22%. Tier 4 fetching clear. Old truck, unfortunately no more gas if you salvage out of that and... Just take a look in there and... Not much. This oughta be an interesting POI to loot through. And... Did I forget to... I forgot to put in that rat remover for my... For my stinking, uh... For my stinking... Uh, stun baton would help with rats a lot. Break into this ATM as well because it's a... It's a great, uh... Great way just to get a little bit extra dukes out of this. As long as the game is willing to cooperate. First try. And... 555 bucks out of that. And nothing. That door's locked, so good to know. Alright, who's in here? I'm sure I'll probably upset somebody here pretty quick. Anything in the file cabinet? Wiring and trapbooks? Nope. Mikey got locked up. Um... Take care of you and... You instantly got taken care of, so... Rifle World book. I am looking for that, so... And... Nothing in here. I'll probably come through here just a little bit, you know, like thanks to the POI, but I just wanna see if there's anything interesting in here. Weapon racks, ooh. A tier four hunting knife. Little bit of buckshot, now I'll read through these really quick. And, sixty-nine out of seventy-five, nice, and halfway on electricity. And I'll actually grab that hunting knife and we'll just modify this on the fly. Um... There we go. And, excellent, nice little upgrade. Get out of there just so I can read my tools digests, really lacking on those, but... On we go. Good thing I decided to stop through there. Anything in you, more stone and lead, all adds up a little bit. And... Looks like the interrogation room. And, alright. Oh, big kappa. Try to let him, let's bet through. There we go. His, his head comes flying off. And, vehicle adventures and all that stuff, excellent. And, we got the, the holding block here, holding cells I guess you could say, what you want. And... There we go. Smack him around a little bit and... Where is... Ow. Couple of trail construction workers, I don't know what they got in their holdings here. Ow. Stoned, I'm stoned by you. Take care of you, you know what, AK. Take care of you. There we go. Sorry, work on my, my shooting a little bit, I thought, I thought I didn't take him down, so... Go away spider zombie, you're so loud. Hackle warfare, which I'll gladly take and... Um, okay, that, that looks to be fine and... Do a little bit more reading here, there we go. We've actually unlocked quality three AKs, so... I felt like I could do a little upgrade on that. I don't know, I'll probably save it for, I'll probably save the resources for like a tier four or five. Try to save up, try to save a little bit of resources for it. And... We're in the courtroom, so, actually, take a look. Probably trapped myself here a little bit, but... There we go. Satchels, hm, done. The toms, I don't know what you're in here for, but I'd rather not listen, rather not hear it. And, come here. There we go. Sounds like there's, could possibly be a watering court outside, we won't worry about them until we're done. Up in the back. A tier three stun baton, I would, man, if only I had... Man, if only I didn't have a tier six stun baton. I think I heard about something like, there might have been like a hidden loot stash around here? I don't know, but, here, let's just, I wonder if it might be through here? Watch, I'm poking my head. Yeah, hidden stash, awesome. And, actually a tier four hunting rifle, not bad. And, how close somewhere are we now? Two books away from being able to make legendary armor, and I didn't search you. Could this be the one actually? No, unfortunately not. That would have been awesome without, without, hm, the ner armor allowed me to spec up a little bit more. Luggage, no. And, of course go through the metal detector. Where is it? Where are the zombies? Mikey. I know you're excited, I didn't bring you a breakout, but, I'm not breaking you out in a typical sense. Uh, do you have a working vending machine? Which I'll actually buy the rockbusters for. That'll be, that'll be perfect. Now for once I need to go mining for something. And... Nothing in the bathroom. I have, I really felt like I could do a toilet pistol, but, where the game felt like it? Uh, might as well check it. You know what? We're past the murky water phase, I'm not gonna grab it because I can make, because I make, uh, water purifiers. Oh, hello. What can I help you with? Are you here for, uh, your driver's licenses or anything? Well, I got that, sorry everybody, you failed. Mikey dropping some loot, you're done. And... Farmer gloves, ten percent more damage with rifles, not too bad. They're booked so in some nightmare. Make sure there's nobody in here. Alright. Also check, check these bookshelves too. That is medical journal. And I'll have to drop some stuff. Scrap you, scrap you, I'll throw you out and... Scrap that. And... Hey, I don't even need the nerd armor to read that. There we go. Armors are maxed out, it'll show up three times because of all the... Because of all the, um... Uh, you know, because it's like, pretty much armor, but... Smack you around, another big mama. Um, check to be sure, okay, we go through here. Alright, where are you at? Oh boy, trail white. There we go. Pull out the AK, make it easier. On our cells and door is unlocked, looks like there's someone else in there. Arm mod schematic and, door is locked, we got a raid businessman. What can I help you with, hm? There we go. See, even the AK's do, I'm doing its job, making, making sure we help out with, make sure it helps out with extra little bits. Might as well rip and tear a little bit with the AK. And, another vehicle adventures, what you got for me? Medical journal, excellent. Oh, okay. Looks like going to the top floor. Ow. Get off. There we go. Pop you a little bit and, oh, Mikey. Might as well just make sure you're barely finished. I got nerve sprained leg, wonderful. And, not gonna worry about that. Cause I would like to try and turn this job into your trade hue. There. My AK accuracy ain't that great. Okay. Read these books quick and... I could actually make a, make a splint, I believe. See, there we go. Oh, I love physician. Perfect. And... Just for the sake of it... We'll throw on a med kit and, and all that. I'm sure there's probably a bunch of zombies gonna... Where are you guys hiding at? You know what, try to take care of them with the stun baton. Try to send them flying out of, out of POI, but, take care of you. Yeah, go ahead, beat, beat up on me a little bit, take care of you. I'd like you to get up from the loot. Thank you. There we go. Feral is done and the trader job is done, so what I'm actually going to do is I'm going to... Drive over quick just to clean the reward and get another job for him. Figured, be the best idea I do. Get away from my motorcycle. Or card for it. Alright, one second, be right over it, uh, Trader Hughes. Alright, we're at Trader Hughes, just a quick little drive. Ah, it's Tilly, hm, hm, it's Tilo, good to see you. I'm doing okay. Uh, YouTube, if you do want to choi me on, uh, you know, like, watch these episodes early, please do, check out the link in the description for my Twitch channel, helps the channel out, like, yeah, on Twitch, so... Um, I'll take your, I'll actually take your, take that and I'll actually take the retracting mod schematic... From you and I'll take your fishing clear. And, we'll grab your... Make sure I don't forget anything, sniper volume three, I'll actually take that. And we'll grab that. There we go. Oh. Really happy with that result. Smack you up a little bit mister and... Oh, well, let me get the motorcycle out of the compound just so I don't... Accidentally lock it in with Trader Hugh over the night. And, I just wanted to sell some stuff off to him. Quick, but, we can save that for tomorrow. And, let's read this stuff quick, just see what we got, I know we got these schematics. Headshots, sunken stone, have very chances of member. We are up to iron tools quality four and we have eight out of a hundred on rifles. Alright, I'm going to break into the loot quick and then we'll go from there folks. Alright, we're almost working, I'm almost working into the loot here quick and medical supplies. We're actually done with medical journal stuff, okay, and... More ammo, particularly seven six twos is a lot out of that and gun store box, another iron spear. Alright, I'm not gonna complain. I don't know why the game's wanting to give me that, but, we'll actually read that, gives me a little bit extra XP. And bookstore box, you got me a... You got me a nice lovely tech planet, which I'll actually scrap down and... Just gonna scrap some of that, scrap that and... Um... Drop the hop seat and all that, see what's in the hard chest. One handy lean, which is nail gun quality four, okay. Scraping for fun, we got orex scope mod and raider gloves, which is actually plus fifty percent melee weapon damage, alright. And some extra dukes. So yeah, that's gonna be about it for today's episode guys, come back in the morning, we'll, and we'll do the invested head job, uh... But, I just want to say if you did make it this far into the video and you like what you see, uh, please leave a like, comment, subscribe down below. And please turn on notifications, helps the channel out a lot, so, have a good one, take care.